We are officially calling to order the, not December 17th. What are we, January 7th? January 7th meeting of the Manchester Essex Regional School District School Committee meeting. Happy New Year. This is our first meeting of 2020. That's a little weird, isn't it? Public comments. I don't see any public, so I will move right on to the chairman's report. So at long last, we have Pam's evaluation of fiscal year '19. Thank you all for getting them in. We were able to synthesize them. And as you guys all received before the holiday, I sent out the master evaluation. So what I thought I would do here is just read the evaluator comments and then talk a little bit about it, and then we can open it up to discussion. So with regard to the executive summary, I will just read what we had. Ms. Bowden was recognized by the majority of the committee as managing the district in an exemplary and effective manner. Despite very large and time-consuming issues such as a lengthy contract negotiation and commencing a major elementary school building project, Ms. Bowden was able to maintain and build upon past successes of the district. Ms. Bowden was also repeatedly recognized for continuing to initiate third-party reviews of various programs and implementing the resulting recommendations. Examples include but are not limited to hiring a full-time athletic director, hiring a school resource officer, and significant and immediate changes implemented in the middle school. These resulted from reviews of our middle school, athletic department, and safety procedures. And I would note, these are third-party reviews that most districts really don't do. So it's a real, you know, kind of looking inwards on ourselves, uncovering all of the positives and the negatives. So that's a big ask. That's a lot to do. This budget, and with regard to the budget. This budget continues to be a challenging situation, and Ms. Bowden has fostered a very collaborative working relationship with the member towns and has been an extremely responsible financial steward. Excuse me. MERSD's operational increases have consistently averaged 3.3% on an annual basis over the last five years. While the majority of the committee shares a positive view of Ms. Bowden's performance, one member felt that the social-emotional environment in the upper schools is lacking, which is a result of leadership within the district and a function of inconsistent policies and non-adherence to said policies. I do want to make it clear that that has been, the social-emotional has been a topic we've all talked about in the upper schools. And it's something we continue to talk about. It's never going to be perfect, and we continue to work on it. And we're open to feedback and continue to take feedback. That said, the group is in agreement that although much of the work has been undertaken in the social-emotional areas, the upper schools require increased focus. So overall, I would say with a tremendous amount on Pam's plate, she's done a terrific job keeping the ship moving in the right direction. I think if you look at some of the big issues that we've had this year, they are very atypical. The budget, the MITA contract, and building a new school, I think to have all of that happen in one small timeframe is pretty incredible to keep things going. So with that, I will open it up to comments. If anyone would like to make a comment, why don't we just go around the horn?
I think Pam's doing a wonderful job. Are we just commenting in general or?
Whatever you'd like to say, I think.
Yeah, I think we're really lucky to have Pam. And I got to work on the negotiations committee with her a lot last year, so I felt really comfortable. And I think she's a wonderful leader for the district. I think we're really awesome.
Thank you.
I know I didn't do the evaluation, but it's been great working with you so far.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot. So you're just getting an idea of kind of how this works, what we're doing, and, you know, kind of how this is put together. So it's an involved process. So it's nice to just kind of go through it first time. Rachel, do you want to talk?
I have a number of concerns that I put into my report. So I'm good for now.
Okay. And everyone saw everybody's report, right?
Oh, really?
Did I not send everybody?
I don't think you s-
Am I not supposed to?
No, you sent it to Pam and to you.
Yeah, you sent that, but you, this summative is what we sent.
Yep.
Yeah, I sent that.
Annie?
Yeah, so I just kind of felt like this was uneven. I didn't feel, I kind of felt like it didn't really reflect, I thought, the success of the district. And I wondered how, I don't like my reviews to ever have a surprise in them. And so, so I guess I'm worried about, not worried, but I just wonder how we can be effective in constructive criticism and be specific. Because it's kind of hard to see someone say something like, "The policies are, you know, are not adequate and that we're not really following that." Because we approve the policies. We approve that handbook. So is there a way of being more specific about those kinds of criticisms so that, you can't fix something if you don't know the specifics? So I guess I just want to be mindful of that. And I really do think that you've had a great year. I mean, the fact that we were able to get so much stuff done. You have a great team. You have the building project, you've let it. And we're figureheads. And, yeah. So, you know, I really wanted to know how much I appreciate the work that you do, because it's a lot of work and-
Beyond just running.
Yeah, and I would not be able, we would not be able to do that stuff from the office that I, I couldn't do all the work that you guys and all the meetings that you take. So I appreciate both you and Avi and the leadership that you've shown over the year in terms of budget. Even though I feel like, you know, we would like to have more. You know, we're working with the two towns. It's frustrating that we can't get what we need to build the programs that we want to build. And then, you know, but we have this, you know, we're very fortunate to get the building project down. So I mean, I, you know, I think that you and Avi have been very good about being mindful of the towns and where they are and how we can work with them and get stuff that we need. Although I feel like we as a committee need to build a case for the need and what we're sacrificing, these death-by-a-thousand- type things. Because we had a constituent that emailed Caroline and I about, "Look, I want to rally the troops." And, you know, I just, I don't know how we do that when, you know.
Well, I, can I address that?
Yeah.
I agree with you. I think one thing that is really critical and that we take advantage of is our collaborative group. And that wouldn't have happened without Pam starting that a few years ago.
Yeah.
And I think that's the first place to start, to kind of take the temperature and see. And I agree with you. I think it is time now to say, listen, we played nice in the sandbox. We played fair. Now we need you guys to help us. We helped you. We need you guys to help us. So I think that is a good place to start. And then we can kind of feel it from there.
Yeah.
And I think we have built some really good political capital in those collaborative meetings with the other parties. And they understand that we have been very good financial stewards, and we have been responsible, and we have been respectful of the parameters. So I think that discussion, I feel a little bit more positive about where that discussion can go this year than in past years. I feel like we're really more now on the same page, sitting at the same table.
And it is a shared responsibility.
Absolutely.
And I feel like I could do a better job of arguing for that. I, me, like, I think that we could-
But, but to bring it around-
Is that my evaluation?
Yeah, to bring it full circle, we have that collaborative group because Pam put it in place. And that's a, that's a very significant nod of her collaborative strengths.
So thank you for the work that you both do. I always feel like Avi's, you know, by default, part of the review. And I think, even if you don't want to be happy with it.
You guys do share.
Yeah.
Same to the head.
Yeah.
I, you know, I think you're doing a fabulous job, both of you too. And I am going to say, I think we do need to, it can't just rely on all of us. We need to get our constituents here and listening and fight. The town boards aren't just going to keep listening to us people. And I disagree with you a little bit. We do need to get people more about-
I think it's a good place to start.
We've been starting that for four years, but that's a bunch of discussion. So I think we do need to start rallying the troops. And Pam can't do everything. She can't be in the building. She can't. And I do feel with, who I don't know, you know, people's names were not on the evaluation, but there is something missing, I just want to say it out loud, in the school emotion. I mean, we're doing everything we can, but there is something, I don't know, it's administration. There's some vibe that is missing. So whoever that other, that person is, it doesn't fall totally on Pam's shoulders at all, but there's something that has to be done in the building. So that's what I'm saying.
I agree. And I think there are things being put into place that I hope will address that. The idea is to address that.
It's not going to happen overnight.
No, it's not going to address that overnight. It's, you know, it's the Titanic. It turns very, very slowly.
But I think Pam is aware of it.
But not ultimately.
Thank you. Oh, look at that. Yeah, okay. It's a Queen Elizabeth.
Hi. Sorry.
Can I just say, come on, on the vibe issue? Because I have, you know, one who just left the high school and one who just started in the high school. And a lot of friends all around the state and the country. I think the vibes in middle schools and high schools are tricky these days. I don't know that we have a problem worse than anybody else's problem. I think it's just-
I just want to correct here. I'm not, I'm not in the school committee all over the world.
But I think your point is-
I'm here, yes. But it doesn't mean that we can't take it seriously and address it.
No.
Or whatever it is. But we take it more. And I think Pam is aware of it. I want to make sure that you hear that loud and clear. But it just needs to, it needs to filter down into the building.
Yeah.
To parents, too.
And parents, too, absolutely.
I mean, I think that that's the thing that we've seen in that heavy hub stuff, which is like, a lot of this stuff is parents recognizing that there's a problem and saying, "We're in it to fix it," you know?
But that was, I think you both are doing, and I think you're both still great together. I know it's your, we got to throw you in there, too.
Thanks.
You're welcome. And the building, I mean, we could not have gotten that building built without you. Not built yet. Well, it was.
We're not going to stop.
On time, on budget. So, thank you.
All right. So that said, I think we have to do something salary-wise, too. Don't we go ahead and say, oh, I'm sorry, Ken, I forgot.
It's okay. Yeah. Thank you for, I was going to say thank you. In terms of the review, I just want to point out that you never see any sort of like, here's where we are, we're at a fixed point, we're doing good. And some of it's the process, and I think some of it also is things that you bring as a leader about, okay, great, we're here, but it's always looking at where's the future and challenging all of us to, what do we need, where do we go, how do we keep moving? And if anything, if there would be any criticism I had, it's almost the, whether it's addressing issues with the vibe in schools or the budget where I was, where I think we're going to make another three years, like, you know, we've been starting to show up. If anything, I'd say be more aggressive in that. But that's just very satisfying with where it is. And I'm pleased to be able to watch, watch how the process and how your organization moves. So thank you.
Just two comments?
Because significantly, thanks to the feedback, I read the review, I take the criticism. And I don't disagree that we're dealing with, call it a vibe, call it our local culture, call it a culmination of society around us. There is a lot of attention to it and that we're not satisfied with where we are in a number of areas. We're going to continue to work forward on that. And we took some big steps forward last year. I think an indirect or quiet recognition that things needed to change was the tackling of the major structural reorganization, which has its own climate impacts at the high school. So I think that's put us in a good foundation, set a good foundation for future work. But there is much work to be done. And I would just say with the building project, I think we created a blueprint for becoming more aggressive on the budget. And I think some of that was strategically putting, picking what the priorities were to be for the past few years. Because we were meeting with Christina earlier on furniture. They've been on board for three years. So we've been working on this process for close to five years now. And I think that's taken center stage in terms of rallying the troops and getting the support behind something. So I think we could kind of look back and do an after-action report. We have a system of how to make our budget goals a reality a couple of years out. So I'm optimistic on it. And I do think we've laid some good groundwork and good balance of the communities.
Yeah, I think that's important.
Thank you for the feedback. And I just want to reiterate, open door. You know, I always count on the fact that if there is something that isn't going well, if it's something that we can't address and sit down and talk about together, that you're going to call me up or come in and let me know. And what I've always said every year is, you're reviewing me, but it is a team effort. So all of, all of the successes really are built on tremendous amount of input and support and advice from Avi, Julie, Allison, Tyler, and the team, John, Jen, Patricia, and Jeremy. You know, it's really, it does work well together. And I think we're positioned now to build a new strategic plan and move forward. It's exciting. Thank you.
Thank you.
As a policy, just add one thing. As a policy committee member, meaning to your point, we do set the policies here at the school committee, as you know. But it's the district's obligation and legal obligation to follow them, and they have been noncompliant this year. So that's an important thing to mention, which a lot of the school committee doesn't know.
But we also, school handbooks, we approve. So I think-
Right, but there's a, it is superintendent and the district's job to be compliant with policy that the, that the school committee sets. And they were noncompliant. So just let me know.
I think, yeah, I think we probably can't open that up for, for some reasons.
I'm not opening up anything. I'm just basically stating the facts, and I think Pam would agree with that, that that's their job is to be compliant with their policies.
Right, and I understand.
And I think the more specific thing I was referring to is student handbook policy stuff that we approved. And I'm just, what I would love to see is, is there some improvement we need to make there? Because that's a big thing that we have to read at the beginning of the year. We often don't read the whole thing. I mean, I read it once, and I read the updates, but I don't read the whole thing every year. And I wonder-
No, it's not mandatory.
Yeah, it is, because you have to sign.
We have to sign.
I know, but I mostly believe I know, sign it and don't read it.
Yeah, but the school committee approves those things in the form.
Yes.
So is there something in that that we need to be more specific? That's kind of what I'm talking about, is let's be specific about-
There are conflicting policies in the policy manual.
Yeah, okay.
So that needs to be, that is work that the district needs to do.
So can we clean those up in policy, in subcommittee?
Absolutely, but it's, they also need to be enforced. That's the, that's the other part of it. And comply, they need to be complied to in a legal fashion.
Moving ahead, consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Tummo.
Wait, do we want to move ahead or no?
You have to go back to yourself.
Oh, that's right. Yes, I got way late.
You're more than personal.
So Pam, do I have to have a motion on that when we've already done it last spring?
Typically, you do do it to close out the evaluation process, and everything gets held until that point.
Okay. So do I have a motion to approve the salary increase that we agreed on last spring that was, what did we say, two?
It was consistent with teacher COLA, two and a half.
Two and a half percent, consistent with teacher COLA as agreed to MITA. Teacher COLA, not Pam's salary, subject to MITA. Do I have a motion to approve? Let me just-
Ken?
Yes, so Pam's increase, two and a half percent, is consistent with the two and a half percent COLA?
Right.
That was agreed to in the MITA contract.
Right.
I didn't want to confuse that by saying Pam was agreed.
Right.
It's quite an education, huh? Thank you. Yes.
Is that, I always like to ask Avi, is that in the budget? We got it?
Yes, it's a big budget conservator board, and that is the consistent increase across the board, so that would get perfect in the budget.
Thank you, sorry. Thank you for reminding me. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? I'm opposed. Okay. One of opposition noted. Abstentions? Motion passes.
I don't know, I was wondering, too. I thought someone's phone line.
More airplane.
No more airplane.
Optical vision from the viewer.
Okay. Moving on to the consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Tummo?
I do have, we got his presence, I'm going to abstain.
Motion to approve. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Abstention, Ken noted.
Yep.
12:05, is that what the, is that the last meeting? 12:05?
That's Thursday.
Who else is not there?
I'm wondering if I was there.
You were not there, and you were not there.
On the fifth?
On the fifth, according to the consent agenda.
The fifth was a Thursday. You didn't have Thursday?
So first year old one. Well, that's where it was my last pottery class. So I have to stay on the minutes and approve the warrant.
As well as Caroline.
Yeah, we did have it on a Thursday. I don't remember why.
So can we abstain from the minutes and approve the warrant?
Okay.
We didn't have school on the teacher, right?
Right.
That was the issue.
That's right. All right, so Weld abstained, too.
All right, do I need to do that again?
Yeah.
Okay. Consent agenda. All in, do I have a motion to approve the consent agenda without the minutes from 12:05? Do you want to do that?
We'll do that warrants first, approve that warrant, and then approve the minutes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to approve the warrants?
Tummo.
Okay. Do I have a second?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. The minutes, do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Tummo.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. She's abstaining.
Okay. So the abstentions, who are the abstentions?
And Caroline.
Warnock.
Warnock, Weld, and Cameron. Okay. All in favor who are here?
Aye.
All opposed, motion passes, thank you. Okay. Approving the out-of-state travel, do I have a motion to approve?
There isn't any.
All right, so we don't need to do that. Let's move ahead to the subcommittee reports. Ooh, gosh, I think I just-
Can I ask a question about the minutes?
First night, yeah.
Which is, because the 12:05 thing raises the question that we're kind of in the winter season, does it work for the majority of us that if we miss the Tuesday meeting because of weather, that we try to go that next Thursday? Or is that not?
The general more for each, just in mind.
Yeah, we're streaming now.
Only because we're getting ready to print out the schedule for the upcoming two months, and every Tuesday is occupied, we weren't meeting, so we'll work with that.
Okay. Pretty much. Okay. Moving ahead, subcommittee reports. Facilities, do we want to do-
So we had one meeting on the 20th of December to talk about a potential change order that had to do with an exterior staircase leading out to the athletic field. And so it had to do with the ground and the soils and stability of that. So we had a meeting, and there was, we convened a subcommittee to work with Pam and Avi to approve that change order if it was needed within that time period. And it looks like the direction we were going in really didn't, wasn't an immediate need, but we got a consensus from the committee and from Lisa O'Dell, who's a structural engineer, which was great to have her at the meeting, because she said, yeah, actually, the less expensive option is the better solution. So that was a good meeting, actually. And you were authorized and you're working on it.
They're working on it. I think the subcommittee convened over the break and approved the approach.
Approach, that's right. Basically, you're having the design team's engineer working with the construction firm's engineer, which is usually, construction firm doesn't always have an engineer, but this is what's called delegated design. So it's owned by the construction manager, they're working together, collaborating very nicely. And so they came up with a few ideas. And so the subcommittee was briefed on them and felt they were good.
May I ask a question for clarification? Is the change order adding a staircase, or is the change order beeping up the-
It's dealing with the soils underneath the staircase, that there was an assessment that they might be, they might be more shoring up.
Got it.
And so there was one thing that required putting in more of those pilings.
You have to go piles.
Piles. And then the other one was?
Slope stabilization.
Yeah, that.
How do you remember all these?
I don't know.
Lot of confidence calls.
But it was a very, very good, it was a good meeting, because we had people on the committee that were in that field who were basically saying, yeah, this is actually a better solution. And so it was a change order, we have those in any construction job, and we're still on time and on budget. So that was good.
Okay, so that change order is handled within sort of the margin of, okay.
And we have plenty of contingency right now, so we're in good shape there.
Excellent. And I think the good report, we met on furniture for several hours this afternoon. We continue to meet on playgrounds. And as you keep predicting, the closer we get to reality, the numbers are actually narrowing. So originally, the over-budget numbers we were really concerned about seem to be kind of coming, it's not perfect yet, but we're getting closer every time. And you have more details, maybe if you talk to Christina longer than I did, but I think they're going to do the big slab four on Thursday.
Yeah, they're beginning it, that's right, first slab on the grid, that's right.
And there'll be some communication out to the neighborhoods tomorrow. It's getting delayed again. Yeah, it was supposed to be tomorrow, but it's been delayed Thursday. So we anticipate communications about to the neighbors tomorrow, just letting them know that some heavy-
And you know that.
What's that?
That's happened coming up.
Communication happening yesterday and today. That's great.
Well, and Dora Whittier is doing, Christina Cheperman, who's project manager, is, she's extremely thorough, right on the ball, good communicator, and thinks it's her responsibility to make sure that things happen, so that we just get informed or asked if there's authority needed. But authority isn't needed, she makes the trains run on time very well, I'd say.
Yeah, she's impressive.
Yeah. We have coffee, I know, but not today.
What? Oh, boy. Okay, moving on. Thank you, guys. That's great. Finance committee. We don't have anything, because we haven't met, right?
We have a meeting Friday morning.
Do you know, can we send out a reminder now? Because a lot of people didn't come to the last one, and I just want to make sure that, you know-
I talked to Brendan about it yesterday. I communicated with him, and I said I would send something out by week.
Eight o'clock?
But I will get that out by eight o'clock.
Okay, I have it. Policy subcommittee, Eric and Rachel.
So we may have work out tonight with the service animal policy. I think there might be some work to do there. Other than that, we haven't really had policies required for the first half of the year, but I think that's going to start to change. And negotiation team, I have an NR, but I do have a slight update. Joanne Seaman and Abby Domley are the co-presidents of MITA. We've been having at a minimum monthly meetings. And we have on the docket to start this January planning for the TA contract process. So we should have some information, some proposal on dates and a schedule for that, hopefully by the end of the week.
Can I ask a question? Does that require to only do new, and I'm looking at negotiation people, is that a whole new contract, or is it a dead, like, can you say refer to, you have to hammer the whole?
It's a whole separate term.
I think that's good.
But you can use the existing contract as a huge template, right?
I think it's good to start from fresh.
Okay. No, I think it's going to be a good, I'm very optimistic about the process. Just kind of how we started the discussions and where we were when we got to the point of acknowledging that we were going forward and doing the voluntary grantation of them. I think it's going to be a good process, and it's going to help us talk through things. Because when you think about all the discussions we had last year when they were easy and when they were not, there are really good points of reference for things we're doing this year. So it's in the mind, ever-present, that people feel like the workload is extreme and that it's ever-growing. So as we're talking about new ideas, I always have that in the back of my mind. So I think it's a group that we haven't, we don't always directly hear from, and it will be good to kind of get a sense of what their world is like and what the concerns are. So, but yes, there are templates out there. We choose to do that.
All right. Pam, do you have anything?
So I was, originally, I was set to say, everyone really enjoyed the two weeks. It seems to be a fan favorite, maybe not from parents, but the two-week vacation was very well-received. But the big highlight, the big point in discussion for tonight is the report we received before break about the Eagles in Essex. So I brought, asked Jason to join us, just because he's been the person running point and the person who's really brought it toward us, and that it needed a stronger look. My understanding is that we do kind of an annual internal review of all the playgrounds,[1747.32] My understanding is that we do kind of an annual internal review of all the playgrounds and we've been on top of making as we go improvements. But that, when Jason took a look at it this summer, he was concerned, I mean, it's a mid nineteen eighty structure. It's all wood and I think there's only so much we can do to it and that's basically what the report told us. So the, you can speak to who the inspector was, but the inspector's report basically said that it should be decommissioned due to safety reasons. And that, you know, repair and renovation really isn't a way to go with this, with this type of structure, it's very specific. Is it Leathers?
Robert Leathers, yeah. Very, very, it's called a Robert Leathers playground, very, very common in the eighties.
Wait, before we move ahead, I want to make sure Pam that you're all done, do you want to introduce Jason?
I'm gonna introduce Jason in a second, so.
Okay.
Sorry, Jason, I just kind of wanted to keep us.
One of, I think she said three or four still in existence because they're shutting them down pretty regularly now. So I guess I'm in the position where I've got a report, it's telling me that there's a safety concern. I'm reporting it to you, I've reported it to Jennifer and in discussions with her, I think, I feel very strongly and I think you guys concur with me. Knowing that we have the report and that there's a specific statement on safety that we need to shut it down. And then the general plan right now, the working plan that I wanted to share with you and we can follow up on next week is that, you know, they're doing hot top at Memorial. So it's not like it's going to be vastly different in both elementary schools. Jennifer's comfortable containing the kids at the hot top, but we'll rope it off, let the parents know in the morning that we're gonna be listening down due to safety. And moving forward with, um, our original thought, my original thought is we use as a basis the school building committee, playground subcommittee has an Essex resident on it. We substitute in the principals, Jason's on it, Avi's on it, anyone else is to be on it from this committee. And they kind of set forward using some of the work that's already been done at Memorial in terms of knowing what's out there, what the process needs to be. Engage Essex community, um, to kind of hit a new design. And if we move quickly enough, we probably have something up to run into them in the fall.
Wow.
So I have a question.
That's the general game plan, but I guess my priority one when we've been talking through it is I feel like I can't not act on the report that's.
Agreed.
So. So questions for me and then I'll let Jason kind of speak to how this came about.
Oh, Rachel, sorry.
Can we have a, can we look at the report, I'd like to read the report?
Yes, of course.
I know that, and I'd like to also know if the school committee, you need our approval to shut it down or you're just shutting it down?
I technically don't. It's a safety, so the game plan is to include the, um, the report in the packet to you and have it all go on the record and post it online. We had posted the agenda prior to all of this going down, so I didn't change the agenda. That's a little bit of the timing issue in this. And I figured notice to parents will include, um, notice that we'll be meeting again on this topic next week if people want to come and discuss it here. You know, share their concerns and their hopes for what it will be.
Can we post the link, a link to the report on our website so people can look?
Yeah.
Caroline, do that's a.
So just a question?
I wasn't finished.
Sorry.
I just want to say that this, this is reviewed annually, correct? The, the safety, I don't understand what happened between two years ago and last year.
Yep.
Why it was so compromised. And I think people need to understand the history of the Eagles Nest. This has been a beloved structure in Essex for like decades, as you know, it's from the eighties. It was built and designed and constructed by a RISD student who's also a parent. It is, it is a beloved structure that is played with, or played on by everybody in the community, even people whose kids don't go to the school. I just want to make sure we're not being hasty in this, I don't understand why it failed so miserably in, in the time between, I know it's examined every year. And I want to have a better understanding of this, I feel like this is a, this is a rush to do something that obviously is needed. And I completely respect the integrity of, of the report and, you know, how it was, um, investigated, et cetera. But I just want to make sure that, I, I don't know what the plan is, if they're gonna have, put a call out to redesign something or to, you know, design a whole new play structure. But I just want to have a better understanding as to what happened in the years because it's been examined every year.
Sure. And that's why I'm going to introduce Jason Waldron as our record facilities, he's started with us this summer and he works under our supervision of Avi. And they've actually been kind of quarterbacking this process, so if you guys wanted to speak a little to what our former process was, how we changed it up this year and why it seems to. Because I asked very similar questions to Rachel, we've kind of gone from zero to sixty in a very short period of time. There's a logical reason why.
Yeah, I'd say, I, I think just to be honest, I think that to me, having overseen facilities department, it was surprising to me that the pace as well. We have an internal process where every year we go through maintenance priorities, we put tickets in. So we have a pretty good system for tracking the maintenance. But this was an internal assessment that was done by basically facilities managers for years and we have a new one. I think he's very good and I think he quickly brought to my attention that he would like to look further into this. And so he can speak to that, but he's got experience with playgrounds as well. And so I think even before we got an outside opinion, um, I think Jason was very quick to say, uh, you know, I'd like to take a look at this. And I understand you've been doing fixes every year, but I think we need to look more holistically at it. And so I encouraged him to, to follow up with getting an outside evaluation. And I think, uh, I, I have to agree with Pam that once, from my perspective, once you have an outside person saying, uh, her advice would be to, you know, decommission it. And that matches what our internal administrator is saying, I think that that's at that point, pretty consistent message. So I just don't want to, I agree with you, I certainly would never want to do something that was quote unquote rushed. But I think anytime I'm dealing with safety issues, uh, I will always err on the side of caution. And when we have two people saying the same thing, I think, and I don't want, Jason's here, he can speak for himself. But I think to me, that's where I would want to act. So you may recall from looking at past invoices, uh, along with our summer, uh, projects that we do, we have been putting some money into Eagles Nest bit by bit. We've had conversations at the school committee, I'd say, you know, several years ago, maybe five, seven years ago, while we're handling, uh, confirming that we are taking maintenance ownership. Some of the things we've done have been to replace, uh, bits of wood around, uh, every year we tend to put, you know, uh, several thousand dollars of work into it most years. We also put in protective work, you know, around splintering and which, in talking to the principal, the types of things that we see with students really just are primarily around that. And then, you know, bits and pieces are examined by our maintenance technician, we have a new maintenance person, I'd say about for about three years. He evaluates it every year, but I think we're really getting now to the point where we're having specialized personnel in this third party evaluator. Who sees playgrounds all over the place. And so I think we've gotten just better information, to be perfectly honest. So I was also in your same boat in terms of seeing that this is pretty quick, but, um.
But I would, I would argue that all that maintenance of Eagles Nest is very similar to like redoing the fields, I mean, it's maintenance. That we do for every bit and piece of our facilities throughout the district, correct?
It's maintenance, but, you know, maintenance takes different parts, some of it is health and safety, some of it is preventative maintenance, some of it is just routine as time goes on.
Right.
So I think everything we do obviously is with a safety eye in mind.
Of course, yeah.
And that's kind of first and foremost.
Right.
So, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I mean, so, so again, as Avi kind of, kind of stated, inspections were done again internally by in-house staff. None of the staff is a licensed playground inspector. Do they know exactly what to look for? A little bit, but yes and no. Um, it's almost kind of like a building inspector, you know, every year we have the building inspector come in, go through our schools, let us know, you know, how our schools are actually doing. It's more than just us internally looking at them. Where a building inspector, just like a playground inspector can let you know codes, rules, regulations, changes, et cetera, et cetera. So I felt the need to bring in some, a certified playground inspector to really look at Eagles Nest with, you know, um, just to really determine what is needed, if anything can be done. Because, um, I built a few playgrounds over at Hamilton Wyndham, used a playground inspector every single year. And I'll, I'll be honest, I was, I was surprised Eagles Nest is still here. I mean, I grew up in Hamilton Wyndham when the kids from Essex went there, I went to Eagles Nest all the time as a kid. I loved it, um, I had many friends that still love it that bring their kids now too, so I could really understand what you're saying about the town. But, you know, as Avi and Pam pointed out, um, it, it's beyond its useful life. And again, the inspector that we use it, that we used, um, you know, agreed and again recommended that, it shouldn't be used anymore, you know? So, um, I think, I wasn't as surprised because I kind of had that feeling. I certainly encourage you guys to read the report if you haven't seen Eagles Nest recently. You know, there's some, some things on that playground that you'll look and be like, yeah, you're, you're right, you know, we shouldn't have kids on this anymore. I mean, there's, there's monkey bars that literally the, the servicing is, is hardwood. I mean, if your kid fell on that playground, you know, what would happen? It was okay thirty years ago, but probably not, you know, like today, you know? And that's just the, the build of the playground thirty years ago, so, um, I understand it's cherished, but, um, again, we kind of all agree that it's just, the safety of the students comes first, so.
The only other thing I would add to that, because it was touched on briefly before, being, uh, this not being my direct area of expertise. One thing I was, uh, found interesting hearing from the consultant was that this is a common style playground that was put in at a place in time. And that by and large, they had started to be replaced and decommissioned. And so that we really, in this situation, are not really alone in the fact that, I think you said it's Robert Leathers is the name of the major. Districts that have those by and large either have taken them out or are in the process of taking them out. And so I think it, quite, you know, we've been trying to maintain it because it is so beloved for years, but I think she's saying, you know, you're, you're putting aside her inspection of our specific playground. She, I think she made pretty clear that we would be in, in very good company if we turn the page and that the time is definitely among us. And I think we've already known that, uh, this was something that we were gonna have to do at some point, but I think at this point we have credible outside, uh, in addition to Jason's expertise advice of how quickly to act.
I have a question.
Um, you're right, I mean, it's gonna be big in town if we're shutting that down tomorrow, so just want to be, you to be where it's gonna be, you're gonna.
Kind of gonna catch twenty-two because we can easily manage the school day and just simply not have the kids on it. But if we're making a statement that we're not letting our kids on it during the school day, I feel that we also have to notify the town.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
I'm not, I'm just, yeah, I think.
You'd totally miss if you didn't do that.
But I just wonder if you could give us kind of a, just a few, a list, a small list of concerns that came up because people are gonna ask what, what were the nature of the concerns? So the fact that the surface, you know, that the landing surfaces were not all spongy or forgiving, um, what about splinters?
Splinters been going on for years.
Yeah.
Numerous splinters throughout.
Yeah.
Um, again, safety servicing, um, we, we added some safety servicing, generally need about twelve inches.
Yeah.
Of safety servicing, it's called E W L.
Yeah.
We probably had about half an inch there, you know, again, that's maintenance stuff that we can do.
Twelve inches, you know, twelve inches deep.
There was probably, there was depth, it just gets compacted over time, we don't have.
Yeah. And that's something we might have put in very recently, but not enough, and it needs to be more. And so when you get outside playground inspector, they're gonna say, you should bump that up significantly, so.
I've been using that playground since nineteen ninety-two and there have been waves replacing that.
Yeah. And he went to that version of the conversation where, I let my grandkids play on it or I let my kids play on it, it's not necessarily a mortal threat. But I think we're having a public discussion about someone rendering a decision that it's unsafe to use.
Yeah.
I don't.
Once you take the top off of that box?
Protection first of the students and also of the district interest, they don't think it's wise to just.
I just wanted to know specifics.
Yeah, so head and travel.
All I've heard so far is splinters and.
Head and travel is galore, galore, like, you know, getting his head stuck and, and, and again, it's all in reports, I apologize for not being exactly specific on the amount of depth. But again, head and travel, you know, galore, tripping hairs, which is galore, ADA against ADA compliant. I mean, you walk up to the main ramp and it, there's a lip like this big right on it, um, missing boards, missing monkey bars, you know, there's literally.
Oh, right, okay.
You know, um, so and again, that's just.
You don't have to put it up, I'm, I, this is fine, this is, this is, I would think you just wanted to know.
It'll be, it'll be good to have it, to get it online when.
Yeah, we'll see the report, but, um.
Yeah, yeah, and there's pictures, uh.
Some of it is, some of it, to be honest, is designed because these days you don't have wood underneath monkey bars.
Yeah, right.
But in the old days when it was built, you did. And so I don't know that this is necessarily a case of something that wasn't. And again, I'm, I'm not even trying to get into the, how we got here, my only point is that some of it is just, they're not designed to be done that way. And, and playgrounds that were designed that way that are still around are being changed.
Yep.
So it's just not common to have.
Rounding wood throughout, chains are really rusty.
So when we were in, on PTO, PTO owned that, like, PTO was like our house, so we were responsible for maintaining that thing. And that, I think, ended probably when you guys came in because you were like, you guys, we, this, this, the district owns the responsibility of that. So it kind of went away from the PTO to school district. But I wonder if, I just have two more questions. Is it all elements of that playground area, like, are the swings still okay or in that little box thing, a weird box thing?
We took that box out.
Oh, is that, it's gone?
Yeah, we took that box out, this, if it's the one I'm talking about with the tires.
Yeah.
Used to be suspended, now it's kind of sitting on the ground, which in some ways is, is better, but it's just, it's just, it's just old and.
So is the whole, the whole wood chip area gonna be cordoned up or is, are the swings available?
Can you keep using the swings, that's a good question.
I don't know, swings one of the, I.
The swings were on my, were priority number one, actually.
Okay, the whole thing, that's all.
Yeah.
So when she ran through, kind of, she gave me a verbal executive summary, it made me think very much of the report we got back at Memorial this week.
Okay.
Which is, you've been living, we've been living with it for so long, we don't really see it, but everything from ADA compliance to, you know, the swing shouldn't be sat on any longer because of the state of the chains and the pieces that hold them in and just fall back.
You, you, the, the, that go into the wood, there's very little, yeah, there are a lot of pieces.
So, so I think that this is going to be very emotional for the town and for the children. And I'm wondering, once, even if the, we have to make the announcement, I totally understand it's unsafe, we have to make the announcement right away in the morning and they can't use the playground. Can they like have a walkthrough with their classes to say goodbye to all their favorite parts? I'm not, this is gonna make me cry. See, I mean, they're gonna need to like.
I think that's a good idea.
Like, can they walk through with their teachers supervised if they're not romping around on it so that they can have a little time with all their favorite spots and?
Absolutely.
They're gonna need some closure.
I think our.
Can the middle school have a field trip too?
I think we can use the fourteenth and whomever wants to come out and talk about what our next steps could be to kind of talk about. Okay, we, it's kind of like call the snow day and then now what are the next steps for this piece?
That's the important.
We can have the discussion, renovation or replacement. And we can go through the, the points of the report that show you that renovation is just not feasible. So then replacement's the next move, so then how do we want to say goodbye to it? Do we, is it more important for us to take time and have, you know, a community disassembling process where people get to take pieces up, you know?
Is that safe?
This is, this will be the, this will be the winter marrow of this stuff.
I'm drawing ideas out there, I'm not suggesting it, but I'm saying, I think we can take some time to process on what the community is and what the best process may be. We have been focusing our brief conversations on, okay, if we've got into this, let's do it quickly.
Yeah.
There's capital money, we want to keep Essex high functioning for the next ten years. We can do this now, so that's kind of the concept of the fast track, which is to get something new in there.
Yeah.
If it's more important for people to have a long, a longer goodbye process and not so important to have something new in the fall, we can take longer with the, the taking it apart. I think the concern I'm hearing from all of the boots on the ground professionals is if it's there, keeping people off it can become a problem. And the other piece it brings to think of is the bridge, which is, it's a community asset, but it's our responsibility. So it's gonna be hard keeping, we can put tape up, but people are telling us to go on it.
It's gonna be an ugly couple of days.
Yeah, but it's a couple of days and I think the reality is it's not safe. And I think once.
You have to stick to that story.
Once a professional looks at it, like you said, Pam, you can live with it and you can kind of shut your eye to some of that stuff and, and know in the back of your head that it's really not safe. But no one's come out and told you yet. Somebody who is certified has come out and said, that's not safe, we gotta rip the Band-Aid off, I think.
Well, there's a liability.
Well, so, exactly.
Just two, two quick points, one, I also, and I just, I would ask if it's, I don't, you may not have an answer, the project's adventure course, that's in the woods. Did they also touch on that because that's also in similar state, or at least to me when I've gone there, although, so just, don't need an answer, mate, but just wanted to put that in as that in or out of scope. And I think if you do rip the Band-Aid off, it's probably less than a day's work with a tobacco to remove. So if something should be done, it should be done quickly rather than let's keep putting tape up every Monday and hoping that.
But I, I think even then, there will be time to say goodbye. I don't think you need to build in more time to say goodbye. I think there'll, there will be plenty of time to say goodbye, I think you have to rip the Band-Aid off.
Well, and the thing that I'm gonna say about the Band-Aid is this, and I have jokingly say this is like our winter marrow vista, where in the fall we said, oh, jeez, we have to make a change. And one of the things that left me feeling good is that we immediately were like, here's the process, here's where we go. That playground has, to your point, Rachel, has been the core of a lot of people in Essex. That playground has, to your point Rachel, has been the core of a lot of people in Essex growing up in the eighties. I remember, I remember disappearing awful from the early nineties. I know, but I'm just saying, that current incarnation, I remember moving in the nineteen ninety-two, being like, oh, jeez, all these star splinters. And it was the old pressure treated wood and all that. If, if it's announced, the announcement probably needs to be done in conjunction with, again, I don't know if that's us tonight or you, some sort of a, it is a community asset, there is a community process. We are behind, the school has, district has pledged sort of capital, or they are infrastructure existing on that to help make this happen. We gotta rip the band-aid off, but here's how we're gonna go forward.
But we already have a, I mean, a beauty is, we already have a playground committee seated, we're ready to go.
So the brief synopsis that I, that I was gonna be sharing tonight is kind of the basis of what we'd like to share.
Yeah.
That there's capital available, we'd like to use the existing school building, building committee, which has actually got Essex resident on it, is actually one of the leads on it, to kind of shepherd the process forward and hopefully have something new in place for the fall, but we do have capital set aside for investment in keeping Essex elementary. I forgot the word that I used, but basically, high functioning, you know, until it's process of determination for renovation or re-lease. And also cites that, at this point, it appears to be cost ineffective to continue to put band-aid on.
I, I guess I have one thing that I probably overtly, when I look up the playgrounds by Leathers, you know, website that's there, they're Western Pennsylvania, they make it, the first thing that comes up on the page, the numbers or the metrics of how many, oftentimes, playgrounds are used as a volunteers who have helped projects completed. This was, this also had died initially, it was put together bringing people in Essex together. So I look, being eternal optimist, I'm like, this is a really good way to, hey, we know that we've gotta do a Manchester, we know we have to do the Essex school in a decade at some point, you know, or whenever that is. This may also be a good opportunity to bring the district community together in Manchester Essex. I don't think there would be an issue with getting volunteers now, but I don't know if that's in the scope of where it is, but I just put that out there and say, this is also a good community, you talked about how do we get hands used, how do we get people? I, I had a colleague who had his, who had a young daughter pass away about twenty years ago in Rockwood, and that prompted a putting in a playground, rejuvenated local playground in Manchester. And it was, it was a couple of major days where everybody came out and made that happen. So I'm not saying, hey, let's all push this for an extra day.
What's the ideas?
I, I guess saying, just saying that, it's an interesting opportunity. And it sounds like the hurdle of where do you get the money and where do you get, where the professionals were actually relatively well set for those.
Yeah, and I think our upcoming conversations have to do with what's the budget that we wanna set for it? Okay, we have the basis of a committee, but what's gonna put, what will their charge rate? I think hearing hopefully if people are, feel strongly about it, they have a place to come and discuss it on the fourteenth, so we can hear from them. I've also kind of, a few people that we've been able to have a discussion with, I'm not sure that it will be as surprising to some as it is to others, kind of like with the Memorial School. Those who hold the nostalgia, it will be very upsetting, but if you're trying to operate and use it, you know, there's been enough kids to have a bumper bruise and enough, you know, it's not like we've never gotten a parent played about the condition of the playground. So I think there could be multiple points of view on whether or not this is a good thing or a bad thing, bad to happen. So I think the purpose of bringing it tonight was to kind of get the process moving to deal with the safety issue, because I'm being very frank and open, kind of sitting on the report doesn't make me comfortable. I felt like it needed public disclosure, and then once it's publicly disclosed, I feel we're compelled to act.
So you don't need a vote on this, right? We do not need a vote on this?
We can take a vote of support, but it would kind of be like a snow day, I've got some information in front of me and I think I need to make a decision for the safety of the kids.
Okay.
This is gonna be happening for tomorrow, post-what?
Yeah, because Jennifer's aware, she's already messaged to her staff to let kids know that there's no playground date. See, I really think the, our internal piece is very simple.
Yeah.
You know, it's just, oh, yeah.
She'd like to see the report done.
Yeah. I thought they was gonna send it to you.
Can I ask a quick question? Is there, is it, can the D P W take that down? I mean, I would rather see that taken down than roped off.
Yep.
So how soon can that happen?
So if we're all on the same page, I think Jason's kind of ready to go with executing that motion.
Yeah.
I think we should wait until our meeting next week to hear what he says.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm just wondering, you know, is that, is it a simple kind of rip it out of the ground kind of thing?
Yeah, I'd say it's about a day's work, yeah.
Pardon?
I bet it's about a day's work.
Yeah, so it's like, could the-
At least you've got the keys in the ignition and the backhoe.
But could the D P W do it?
Um, I would, I've not reached out to the D P W, I've reached out to our local contractor.
Oh, okay.
I can talk to the D P W, I would say I'm there, I don't wanna speak for them, but I'm sure they're probably-
Is there a reason why you would prefer to do that, rather than just get, have it be a project that you can oversee and supervise?
They're, they're, well, and there also may be an aspect of, I don't know the age of the wood, but that would disposal of the wood, if it's, if it's arson or tree or whatever, may be an issue where you wanna have some sort of, not like giant clouds of dust, so.
Just feel, yeah, I, we haven't heard that, but I would say that we, that we, you know, part of having responsibility for maintenance is just having responsibility for over execution of the job. And so I think it's just a little simpler and cleaner from my perspective to have us take care of it, but I'm open to people's feedback if they feel difficult.
If we can get it done cheaper by having the D P W do it, and they can do it well, why not? I don't know.
I'm happy to reach out to them.
We wanna partner with them in Manchester, we, we have an equal partner in Essex, so let's, I, I don't know.
My, my question is just their, their timing, their staff and-
And they may not be able to do it.
Right.
Other things we may not have thought of, because like I said, we'd be kind of hyper-focused on just kind of the safety plan and making sure that it was there, and then sharing it with you. Other things to consider?
I just wanna make sure that Jennifer knows, to tell the teachers that they can all walk their classes through for one last time, so that they, I just think that's really important.
And it may be worthwhile getting something in, just because, again, to your point, it's a community that people in Manchester go and use, people in the whole thing go and use.
Yeah.
People know it, it's there, and they're really thinking, the overall vibe that I'm getting from here isn't playground's going away, it's the playground as we know it is gone, there will be a new playground there, that's the tactical goal. Sorry for the interruption and service, but we really hope you can help us, that we're gonna get it back and go.
But I think people also be really happy and hopefully surprised, happily surprised to learn that there will be something in place by next fall. It's not gonna be like a whole year, they're gonna be, you know?
And already money's set aside, so I think that's all good.
Actually, just being a pessimist, I mean, it is close to the pond and the wetland and some of that, so there may be some element of where it goes through conscom or some, some element, sorry.
I'll figure that out.
Yeah, I know.
That's why I keep using, and this is just a recommendation you get, we can set it up differently, people have a better idea. That building committee, subcommittee kind of knows the ropes on how to move things through at this point. So at least you have a core of people in there who kind of been through the process recently, because it, it may not be as simple as it was twenty or thirty years ago, which is what I'm learning. That everything, I think we're required to have a design element, to bid certain components of it, and we can get into that next week, so. So it's kind of a combination of bridge and memorial projects, really. Like, it's a community asset, yet it's squarely on us to, to deal with it.
So what do you need from us?
I just really wanted to inform you, so, just so you understand my, my thinking, the strategy was to, of course, we briefed Jennifer on it, so she knew what I was sharing tonight. My thinking was, like, she just put something out immediately, like, Monday or Tuesday, but then we would be getting sixty, like, so this is the public disclosure, we're acting on the public disclosure of the report. You know, so you can field questions and, uh, have the funnel up or the phone is ringing off the hook, because nobody knows what's happened. So this is step one, notifying you, Jennifer knows, Jennifer will notify her staff, we're doing it as we speak. Will work with our kids, she'll work with our kids in the morning to make sure they're not playing on the structure, and we'll use tomorrow morning to notify Brendan in the town and have him help us get a message out.
So when do the parents get notified? Tonight?
They'll probably get notified eight tomorrow.
Okay.
From Jennifer.
Okay, so then, the fourteenth, what happens on the fourteenth?
They're invited to come on the fourteenth and share their ideas and thoughts and concerns about, you know, moving forward. It's an opportunity for them to hear similar things tonight as to why the recommendation is that it needs to go down, get taken out and replaced.
So it will not be taken out by the fourteenth? Okay, so on the fourteenth, we're going to be receiving input from the public about how to do this, or about the whole situation? Are we making any determination at the four, at the end of the fourteenth?
I think what I'd like to do on the fourteenth is kind of flush out our plan a little bit more in terms of the steps we'd like to take and bring a potential cost estimate based on our work with Memorial School and talk about the funding.
So we'll have a pretty concrete plan to present to the public and say, okay, so, yes, we take your input, this is how we're moving forward.
And I would think the vote comes, and, you know, correct me if you think I'm off base on this, the vote needs to come on approval of going forward with the committee to research and recommend a new structure and a funding, a basic funding package to go with it, so they have a budget to work with them.
So we're voting on that on the fourteenth?
And decommissioning it.
Okay.
So how are we gonna vote on a budget, or if we don't have a budget?
Well, I think what we learned with the building project is sometimes good to set a ceiling and then not to exceed, that way they're, where they can design the budget.
And we have some idea of that kind of building project, because there's several playgrounds.
Right, we just have a lot of budget issues this year, so I'm concerned that all of a sudden now, we're having to build a playground by the fall.
That's, you wanna spend all the funds that come from the interest income on the bonds.
No, I understand that, I understand that, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, my personal opinion on that is that there can be a range of different costs based on the exact approach you go with. For example, getting a design build contractor, you can do both things at the house. So I think getting an order of magnitude for the school committee might be helpful. And obviously, our job is to get the best structure within a range, maybe we consider a not-to-exceed level, and then pass the group to come back with a recommendation. If the recommendation is, we can do it for less, but here's what it looks like, or we recommend just an extra five thousand dollars or whatever, you think the school committee could be updated on that due to the subcommittee updates that we typically provide. But at least this would allow us, I think, if I'm hearing, and correct me if I'm wrong, because it's kind of all happening quickly, what we're really asking permission for is to move the process forward with an understanding of the potential impact potentially. And as mentioned, we do have funds in reserve, really our reserve funds are around one-time issues. And so this is really something we haven't talked about in the decade that I've been here, as needing to replace a playground of this size. So I think it really fits to the perfect use typically of what reserves are for.
I guess I, I also just, I'll reiterate, and I'll also volunteer. Like I said, this is, playgrounds are typically the one we're seeing where it is good, where community involvement is possible in any aspect of a school facility. I don't know if it makes it messier, and I completely understand if it does, but on the other hand, if it's a possibility, I think it's a good way to unify, and if you need volunteer help, I'm happy to be involved or uninvolved as you see fit, because I think it's important.
And I think it's gonna be an interesting conversation at budget collaboration, because I think what we found out, I bring up the bridge because of exactly what Sarah and Rachel brings up, which is, it's considered a community asset and a community bill, but it's now part of the maintenance package and responsibility package of the district. So if we decommission it, my guess is the, I'm thinking the vote comes from school committee, but does the vote have to come from the board of select?
No.
Because when we wanted to possibly take down the bridge, there became a whole lot of conversation. So I don't know what conversation is to be had, sort of the question of the timeline. It sound, I'm saying fast track, but I think it needs to be, discussions need to be had, had with different groups.
Who needs to notify the board of selecting this?
So we know who owns what piece of this and who owns the replacement piece and who owns the committee component. Because if you do it in a Rockport or in a Gloucester, it's all one municipality, it's all one entity. So we get, sometimes it gets a little confused with regional agreement.
We can talk about that on Friday, right?
Yeah, that's the game plan.
Right.
That was some of the thinking and getting it on the record tonight.
I guess the one thing, you know, I'm looking at the site too, there is that community bill, you know, if you, if you pick one, one company for Memorial School, are you gonna, are you gonna wanna have, you know, the same?
Style.
Style for Essex, or, you know, if you, if you decide that, you know, the community in Essex really likes this, I can't remember which one it's from so long, but-
I can't believe it's been a while.
So Leathers thing, does, is, is Manchester gonna look at that and say, you know, hey, you know, we really like that idea of a community build, and does that kind of throw our-
So you all know how my mind works at this point, because I think the community concept is, we've used one process in Manchester. And we never really opened it up, maybe the process doesn't allow, didn't allow for it.
Yeah.
So I need this group to help with, how do we make sure we're equitable in our process and our approach and our budgeting?
Yeah.
So that, and it doesn't always have to be exactly the same, and fair isn't always equal, but just that we're not going in two totally different directions.
Well, I'll also say this is unfair, Essex gets to move quicker.
That's true.
No, I know. I think that that, I don't know if that's true.
So, yeah.
So I think those are the, those are the big topics for the committee. Again, I was kind of focused on safety first and then general concept of a plan, but now we can add some details to it and take a lot of input, so the plan is actually reflective of the work that we need to do and the outcome that we want.
And one thing that's also really important is this increases, any playground will increase accessibility compared with something that's built in the areas.
When you read the report, you'll see that there are a large number of items that are design related. Spacing between items needs to be greater, well, that's, I mean, it was built this way and it wasn't built illegally, it was built appropriately at the time, and so there's a lot of things like that, even though there are other things that get down to trying to keep ahead of maintenance and where you get to a point where you just throw good money after bad, which is exactly where we ended up talking about with the Memorial School. It's like, yes, you can continue to keep it alive, but at some point it becomes a waste of taxpayer funds to do that despite the attachment that we have to it.
So we should let you guys go off and do your job, and come back to us on the fourteenth with your presentation. Public will probably be here, you know, move forward from that point.
Maybe, as part of that presentation, it might be good to just have some bullet points about all of the head entrapments, tripping hazards, missing boards, et cetera, like, just as a handout, because if they're gonna have a lot of people, maybe like one side is the dangers, and then the other side is, here's the plan, from moving forward.
Paint a, paint a picture also, this was what it would look like on a new. If this is the old existing, here's what would be, a new would be like, so that way we're, we have something positive to focus on.
And we'll post the report.
Yeah, and the report, there's plenty of, yeah.
Yeah, I would just like to add, as a, that's a final thing. You know, we're, we're dealing with a year where Maravista is gone, Eighth Grade Trip is gone, Eagle's Nest is now gone. I, I, I just think you need to, we all need to think about the things that are, you know, there's a lot of good going on as well, I'm not gonna, you know, paint a negative picture, but I'm just saying, we're dealing with a community in Essex where there's a feeling of things going away. And as, you know, Memorial's got this brand-new school, which is wonderful, Essex will have a new school in ten years, and Essex is being maintained properly and all of that, but I just, I, I need to stress that there is a feeling in the community of this. And this is another thing going away that is a beloved part of the community. I totally agree with the safety issue, I have no problem with that, I do wanna read the report. I don't, I haven't heard of any child getting mauled by a piece of wood or, you know, hit over the head. I mean, my kids played on that thing incessantly and nobody got hurt. However, I'm sure that there have been some injuries, I don't know, I don't know, Jennifer may have a report on that or information on that. But I just wanna state that there is, you know, a feeling that things are going away and going away quickly without a lot of, you know.
We have to be sensitive.
And we have to be sensitive to that. I mean, Maravista was gone overnight because we got a staffing issue, now this is being roped off tomorrow, or, you know. So I just wanted to put that out there, and I think that it's a P R issue as well as a safety issue. We need to be sensitive to that.
Okay. So, thank you. Can we wrap up that discussion and then talk about my favorite topic, dogs? Let's talk about some service animals.
Are you all done with your summer time assignment?
Oh.
That was it.
Okay. So let's talk about dogs, because they're cooler than people.
Jason, you're good.
So is this the existing house?
You may wanna stay for about ten minutes.
Ten minutes?
Yes.
Well, talk about dogs, who doesn't like dogs?
I have a puppy.
And just kind of take your temperature one, too, because I just wanted to share some thinking that's going on. And so, taking away and adding, right, that's what we keep doing. Like, we're in this period of shift, like Rachel's mentioned. So we have a growing interest in having service dogs. I know the high school has had, in a specific agency, once a year, we cordon them off in one specific room to give access to kids, remember, stress relief during exams. Jennifer's approached me, she's made contact with somebody in the community who's interested in bringing their therapy dog into school. So I, I think everyone is very dog positive and thinks very positively about this, but I'm trying to throw the brakes on a little bit to make sure we have the right pieces in place before we do it. And I'm just gonna share what my, I'm a dog lover, and I'd have, have my guy in here every day if I could. But I'm feeling like, if we're going down this pathway, it can't, and this is where I want feedback, is it- Is it okay that one school has a therapy dog and another school doesn't? That kids in one have access to a program and you don't in another? Do I care for the high school and not the middle school, is it okay for one elementary and not the other? Or do we let it kind of happen generically and bubble up in the room and just put pieces in place to make it allowable and practical for it to happen? I said, I asked Jason to stay because I'm thinking of everything from, we think, you know, great cute dog handler comes in, but we've got allergy issues, we've got cleanliness issues. So I think the more we think about it, the more we realize that there are a lot of new sets. So, two questions. How do you guys feel about therapy dog programs? Are you interested, interested and supportive of us pursuing it? And then, based on, if you got to read policy, do you think we have enough in place to make it work? Or should we be looking at a specific policy about either acquiring an agency or acquiring an animal? Because there's two different ways that people go. Either you make a connection with a handler who brings the dog in, other people actually have a dog as a staff member. And a staff member cares for the dog, the dog comes to school every day. So there's like a, there's a lot of different variations on the program.
Like a canine dog?
So discuss, how are you feeling about?
I, I just want to go back to why we're doing this. I, I wanna ask the question why we're doing this. I, you know, dogs are great. And I just, if you can get back to, you know, it's nice to pet a dog during finals week when you're stressed out. But is that the only reason, or what, you mean, outside of the ADL, you know, any compliance issues with needing, if a child has a therapy dog, et cetera, that they have to get permission from the principal?
This isn't, this, right, so we're not talking about a service dog, like, some students may have service dogs that need to come to school.
And that's a, that's a.
This is under the social, emotional, and mental health bucket of creating opportunities and utilizing strategies that are out there to help kids manage stress, decompress. They've been, I'm not completely up on the research, but they are, they have been used and it's happening in more and more schools lately where they're going down this route of having a dog and to work with the adjustment counselor, make contact with kids, act as a calming influence for kids who have regulatory issues. So it's a calming tool, I guess, in some way. So that's, what do we know about it? What do we, how do we feel about it, what's our initial reaction, what homework do we have to do? I'm asking the question, I'm not promoting a program, I'm legitimately taking it.
So I just have one thought on that before we open it up for questions. You mentioned that other schools are doing it. So it would be interesting to see how they are handling all those sort of other loose issues in both scenarios, whether or not the dog lives in the school as a, you know, as the companion to one of the teachers, or if the dog is from an outside sort of third party, however you get it here. I would be curious to know how other schools do both of those situations, and with that, you know, that could be a template.
I did do a poll for policies to see how people were handling it, and like many things, we're a little bit all over the place. So some people are just using the policy that we have and leaving it to the discretion of the principal to make the arrangements and coordinate the program. And some people have templated letters and a little bit more structured programs in terms of, I believe it's Melrose where they went forward where the guidance counselor basically became handler, sorry, it was the canine unit concept. And the dog lives with the counselor and the counselor brings the dog into work. And they went through a process of having not too different a policy than we did, but probably protocols within the school and announcement as of the dog were staffed. So I think there's a pretty wide spectrum, and I don't know that there's one specific way to do it. So I think we're trying to just take the temperature where we are on it. If we're kind of flat out, no, this doesn't make sense for us, there's too much involved, then we'll cease investigation. If it's like, oh, this seems interesting, it seems to be trending to the positive, continue to look at it, you need to do more work, then we'll go do more work. I'm just kind of taking the temperature tonight.
Have there been increased asks for this, is that why we're talking about this now?
Yeah, so Jennifer has connected with someone in Manchester who is a therapy dog trainer.
Sort of, is the, is the ask coming from the trainer or is the ask coming from the school?
I think the adjustment counselor would like it to have.
I see, okay.
So it, it has been done formally in the past.
In the school, in our, one of our schools?
In other schools, I believe one of the former teachers brought her therapy dog over to Manchester after retirement, so.
Okay.
Like I said, we had a company come in with their therapy dogs during exam week. So it's kind of been, it's not uncommon, it's been tried, it's been a good distresser. My, I guess I bring it to you because I think once we get one school integrating it into the counseling component, then there's gonna be a question of equity.
Absolutely.
And consistency in the K-12, and that kind of is our theme, that we're trying to make sure we're doing things alike. And I just wanted to get a sense from you guys where you were on this topic.
So the adjustment counselor suggested it, is that?
I believe so.
Okay. So let's take it around the horn, as usual. Caroline, you want to start?
I'm gonna start, change my.
I thought we started last time.
I will, I mean, I, when I first came on school committee is when we took the animals out of the building, and I was very sad about that. And I would like to go back to the old days where you could have a trip in the classroom. But I think we have so many, such big fish to fry right now, and the fact that we're gonna talk about having a dog come into the school. Yeah, it's, you know, we need teachers, we need, we need so many things. And I think we're doing so many other fabulous programs for emotional, social, emotional, I just don't, I don't, I don't see this happening right now.
When I started at Essex Elementary, there was an old lab that used to hang out outside the door at the end of the day. And all the kids loved it, and then they banned the dog from the school grounds, so.
Huh? That was when we locked you out as well?
Yes. I was, I was that dog. No, I just, you know, I, I, I agree with Caroline, I don't think this is, you know, there are plenty of organizations that can come in and do service dog if we need it and when we need it. And I think what we have here is fine, I mean, it's kind of weird, the horse, the miniature horse thing, I wondered where. Like, I was wondering, did you guys throw this in there, like, what, what is that, it seemed very random to me.
Carney in a previous. Yeah, people, I mean, therapy horses are a reality.
Yeah.
And they have been points of contention in the local districts.
Yeah, and I'm worried about, I was also thinking about the whole service dog, emotional support animals, and how, you know, there's some very odd things that people choose and, you know, I, I don't know.
That wouldn't be the case, this would, this would be commissioning a handler or an agency to provide us with a service dog.
I think it's great to call service dog and have switch and have them come whenever you want them to come and have each principal have the control of it. I don't think we need to own any more things or have to care for any more things, we're good. Sorry.
No worries, Rachel?
I second what Annie said, I think we have a lot on our plate.
I started again.
Yeah. I'm on the same page, I think if we need it, we bring it in. And I think there are other things we can be doing social, emotionally, bucket wise, that, that need to be done and are not being done, that I'd like to see done, and I don't think this is the answer.
I agree too. Actually, just read an article about pet therapy today.
You wrote one?
Yeah, well, the hospital, I look at this program that supports patients, that's that. And I do think there are a lot of benefits about it, but I agree, there's a lot of play, and I think maybe it's worth listening to.
Well, I thought what we were talking about was having somebody come in occasionally with a therapy dog, not having a therapy dog live at the school.
That is the proposal.
Okay, so if what we're talking about is having somebody come in with a therapy dog, then I'm totally on board with that, I think that's a great idea. I don't think this policy covers it, because I think this policy is about students bringing their therapy dogs to school. So I do think we would maybe need something short and sweet, because it would be owned by an outside person, an outside thing, that maybe, just like the reading dog comes to the library and the kids get to read to the reading dog sometimes. I think having, and I think starting off, let's small like that, and then both schools could have whoever it is have switched therapy dogs, or Manchester therapy dogs, whoever had a certified therapy dog. Once, once in a while or once a week, a little bit, and see how that goes.
Well, see, so I'm totally confused, because I thought it was a request, you said it was a request from the adjustment counselor to have.
Like a form.
Sort of a permanent dog.
This is kind of a.
So I'm so confused.
From the bottom up, conversation between a resident of Manchester and, this person is also a resident and an employee, some type of a conversation transpired where there, there is a woman in town who's a licensed therapy dog handler. The question is, can she come in with her therapy dog to the school? So the proposal on the table is accessing the service organization or a handler to come in.
Just contract.
Yeah, but my, my wheels did start turning, and my question is, if we're okay, like, if I'm hearing we're okay with a third party coming in on occasion, then I have a different set of questions for the group that I think goes to Sarah's concern about not having enough in this policy. Because my question is, you know, I can get certification from my dog that says they're a therapy, like, how do we go through and qualify? Who is a handler trained to be in schools? So those are the questions that I originally started with, where it led to a policy question, I'm sorry if I'm being very confusing. And in my quest for finding information from other districts, I came across the gamut of them having their own animal and using outside agencies.
I think the key is, in your phrase, on occasion. So I think having a third party come in with a therapy dog on occasion is okay. But then I think we need to define what on occasion is, is it around exam time, is it once a week, is it every day? I mean, I think that's kind of where the details lie.
So if I'm hearing, I'm sorry, Ken, go ahead.
No, I was gonna say, I just, I'm confused, because part of me, when I reframed, just reframing this, or we, the first paragraph, it basically says it's up to the discretion of the principal. And that's what the current policy states. And, and I guess the question, regardless of whether it's a live-in dog or whatever, is there something wrong with saying, at least for the time being, saying it's at the discretion of the principal, whether it's occasional or live-in, the one that's by the door? Is, is there anything, I guess, inherently wrong with this that prevents that, what the request was from happening? That, that needs, I guess, is this in our jurisdiction?
Sure, I'm bringing it here because I'm, I'm feeling like, and I'm, I'm thinking about literacy in this. It feels like we're beginning a new program. Because once we start it, where does it go from there? And if it's a one-time thing or three times a year at Essex, I think it's not an issue. But if it becomes more regulatory, I think we need to get Allison Collins in the conversation, because if it becomes prescriptive, you know, it can go down a lot of routes. So I guess step one in the conversation was exactly what we're doing now, how do we all feel about it? What are our thoughts, what are our concerns? Are we pro, are we strongly con? Well, it seems like we're not in the, we don't have the capacity or the interest to get our own canine. Right, that wasn't the proposal on the table. But we're kind of open to a third party coming in, but we clearly need some concept of who and how we decide what that third party is. Do we have to do kind of like an RFP, or is it the person that I know who lives next door to the school? You know, that, those pieces concern me. And then, to your point, frequency, sorry.
No, I just, first of all, I think there should be, we can't afford to add a program, so this has to be voluntary. And there are plenty of people who'd like to bring their service dogs in on a volunteer basis. So I think that is one thing I feel strongly about right now. And then to, to Ken's point, I think that first sentence in our existing policy is like, you know, if a kid wants to bring Spot to school for show and tell, not like having any animal.
Well, I, I think any animal, like whether it's the fish in the fish tank in front of Memorial, it says, this is a building with principal discretion issue. Because I, again, I almost like, a school committee, we've got the policy, we need to get into that well. I, I see that you see whether it's the slippery slope without, as this is clear. But to me, it feels like, I don't wanna get into kicking which fish goes in the tank, this thing.
Yes, I'm that.
Thank you.
But a principal may have to look at a policy, is what I'm saying. A principal will look for a policy.
Yeah.
I think a principal's gonna be guiding.
You know, it may be up to their discretion, but they're gonna, they're gonna reference policy.
And, and this references guidelines, it talks about student help, and there's something about educational program. And I'm like, if it's, if the principal says, this is outside my bounds, or if you feel this is inappropriate, maybe then come up to us, but I'm like, I'll see.
Yeah, I still, again, it goes back to the, what are we doing and why?
So do you need to answer the guidance counselor? Because I would say.
It's not the guidance counselor, I'm in a conversation with Jennifer, I've asked her to just be patient while we kind of work with this, because, I mean, I think the entire team knows we're trying to work on consistency. And I think it's something that can start very small, but very quickly become an interest of all the other schools. And the question. The questions I had.
Or plans or.
Were a lot around, how do you choose the handler? You know, do we get approached by the person, do we solicit and interview people, what does the credentialing look like? And then, as much as it's the principal's discretion, there's a piece that's gonna fall to facilities.
Well, this is the, and all what you're describing is like, this is administrative shit.
So we can look at putting some protocols together and kind of fleshing out what it would look like.
Yeah.
So not a closed discussion, we're not looking to launch any major program initiatives that have any financial investment or are gonna take a lot of energy, so.
Okay.
We'll take it back for discussion, this is exactly what I wanted from this, so I'm sorry if it was.
So we leave the policy as is?
Oh, yeah, the policy stays as is, it was just kind of a point of reference to take the temperature, so.
I think you got it.
I think we were ID.
I was reading through what you're calling, what's the idea that I'm looking at?
All right, let's move ahead to the calendar, the school committee calendar.
Just referencing what we've got on the docket, the remainder of the.
I'll bring my dog in next meeting, she'll eat all your snacks.
Here you go, I'm sorry.
Oh, okay.
I didn't know if you would have any words of wisdom.
On, on the dogs?
Yeah, I wouldn't even venture into that one, sorry, over there.
Yeah, this is a dog at the beach, maybe.
Well, thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, since you're here, I just wanna say, what an amazing job Jason's doing, he's been great.
Yeah, he says that when you're not here too.
So Jason and Larry, oh, sorry.
Oh, on the train?
Just kidding.
We're crushing it.
We've talked about that.
We're crushing it, we're crushing it. Although, you know, we were joking about whether we need a basketball game, staff game against Sandwich Lawrence, but.
Do you enjoy it?
Jason's been an amazing addition to the team, and when we get into planning, with your planning, I just want to say, you've been such a great asset. And we'll be back during budget season tomorrow, so, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, Jason.
All right. Calendar.
Just a reference point, so it's on that for the remainder of the year.
Oh, I see, it's left out, it's out of the.
So the fourteenth we have a meeting, and the twenty-first is building committee, and then the twenty-eighth is the final budget.
Why would FinCom be there? Yep, yep, FinCom on January fifteenth.
That's Manchester FinCom, right?
It's an invitational. And we have one possible change, there's a big basketball game on the fourteenth, so.
On January.
Four things to do, program of studies on the twenty-eighth for the hearing and our business meetings, six thirty.
Can we, sorry, Shannon, can we again go over the, the January fifteenth is the Manchester FinCom meeting?
Yeah.
We don't have one scheduled, the Essex FinCom?
No.
Do we want to, or are we really talking about that on Friday?
We do have to move out on Friday, if they want us to come, we'll come.
And then, in terms of that, who is gonna go to those meetings? Because that's always also a challenge, is Manchester FinCom meeting.
Definitely.
Yep. And then, and then we'll talk to the Essex FinCom, how they're going to their meetings, if they want to, they may not want to.
Brendan, his last email basically said there are a few cases behind.
Yep.
So it may emerge as an issue for them later.
Okay. And then final budget is the twenty-eighth, and that's when we vote on it, the one that goes to.
We vote on the fourth.
Okay. Final budget hearing is the hearing, hearing, all, yeah, yeah.
And we do that at seven, so we can do a business meeting ahead of it from six to seven.
I'm sorry, wait, what day are we on, the six to seven?
The twenty-eighth.
So the program of studies will take place at six PM, budget workshop is.
No, on the twenty-eighth.
Yeah.
Yeah, program of study, she said it's moving to the twenty-eighth.
Oh, we're moving that to the twenty-eighth. Okay, so Tuesday, January twenty-eighth, we're gonna start at six.
Yeah, that's okay.
Is everyone all right with that?
Give us an hour to business ahead of time?
Yep.
And that's again, in Essex.
That one's next week, it's two weeks.
Okay. And this is kind of long-term planning, but we can switch up and do first in Essex, second in Manchester next year, if people would rather do that.
I don't.
That's what.
Like when they all went to Essex last.
That was their own.
Okay, I don't want to get that. Everything else is very straightforward, typical, second half of the year, but we'll start our spotlight presentations on the fourth. And we use what Sarah so basically articulated for us as kind of the guidelines. They have that, they're working on them. It's kind of a then and now, what's changed in education.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
I liked when the kids came in.
They have many courage to incorporate students in their music video.
Yeah, and I, yeah, I thought the kids who were in the. Yeah, and I, yeah, I thought the kids who were in the, what was that program? Our own program that came in, that was really impressive.
So at the bottom, on the notes, topics for study, is that kind of like our parking lot?
Yep.
Do we have anything that we want to take out of the parking lot and put it in there?
That's their only.
I know we had talked about the late start, and that's something that we felt we wanted to get to the curb while we were walking, uh, I'm sorry.
Okay, do you want to know what's in the parking lot?
Yes, please.
Our student rep.
Oh, yes.
We haven't seen one for a while.
Okay.
And we also talked about whether we should change that up, the format of it. I don't know if that's a thing there.
If the carolants get bored and don't come back anymore.
We'd like an update maybe on the cell phones. We've heard a lot about cell phones and policies and what's happening in the classrooms in high school.
So we can add that as a question for the twenty-eighth, because I think high school council, high school school council is faculty.
Yeah, that'd be good too.
Yeah.
I'm not even gonna say school's third time's out of.
I don't think we're going to take that, I'm not sure.
Um, we have one that's how to become a better, more inclusive community. No Place For Hate, I don't remember where this is from. And then I have selectmen's question mark. Definitely.
All right.
I know what No Place For Hate is. I think we were talking about, I mean, No Place For Hate, I don't even know if it still exists, but we were talking about how, how communities can start to talk about diversifying and being more inclusive. And I think I gave the example that Newbury Port as a city took on the issues of kind of the culture.
And so sort of we have the ME Hub now.
Yeah, right.
And can we get the towns to be also on board? I think this all comes back full circle to what we were talking about at the very beginning, about the, the vibe in our schools, which is also the vibe in our communities. And we'd all like to vibe more with the vibes, as the kids say.
And that's what I think the No Place For Hate thing was, because it was like a community declaration of who we were and what we stood for. And then a lot of things built from that or put in place from it. So someone like Andy Eggman, her work kind of came out of that initiative that the community took together to kind of go forward. So they put spokes in, in the community. I think the board of selectmen is usually the, well, where does the town governments fit into this, because should they be on board? So it's that big conversation that maybe works its way into the strategic plan.
So ME Hub is, you know, we've been talking about programming, what's the next kind of program that we want to have?
Yeah.
You know, Julie, remember Julie used to talk about Quaker meeting? Remember? We used to have.
Talked about what?
Quaker meeting, remember?
Yep.
We used to go to a school and she'd say, why don't we ever have a meeting to talk about some of these issues of culture? You know, and, and I think one of our concerns was how do you moderate or facilitate a meeting like that and so that it's effective and not, you know, accusatory or, how do you do it effectively?
Yep.
And I just don't know if we know of any models of that, but it seems like there's a conversation to be had based on kind of the, what you guys are talking about, the vibe and the culture and that sort of stuff. How do you have a community conversation that is positive, constructive, and gives you like work to do? And I just, I don't know if it does that effectively. And where have you seen my, I mean, I wondered, that, that would be interesting to talk about.
Thinking like, can somebody just send me to the public school that figured out how to do this?
Yeah. I know, I don't know. I, I say that with all sincerity.
Yeah, no.
Because I just think it's like a, it's a ground up.
Yep.
Um, because I remember that conversation with Julie, and I just, I feel like some of the other things that we want to be, we don't have the foundational components to do it in the moment.
No.
Because it would have been, there have been times where that would be a good, a good method.
Yeah.
For working through things, but we're, we're not currently built for that.
Yeah.
So it will have likely do more harm than it did. And it also is, is the people that come may not necessarily be the people we want to have at the table.
Yeah.
So how do you?
You're preaching to the choir.
Yeah, and you look at our town meeting instructors and how they, and how, and sometimes that choir is a little pious.
Is this, I'm just gonna throw it out there, is this something to just kind of throw out on the table at our collaborative meeting? I mean, I know we've got, you know, it's, it's usually financially focused and all of that, sorry, something flying in front of me. So is it worth just throwing it out on the table and kind of seeing where that discussion goes and just planting the seed and saying this is something maybe we should be discussing as an entire community?
Well, I think we're, sorry, I didn't hear you.
No, I was done.
I think Brendan's looking for some clarity around ME Hub, and I think, you know, back to the whole point of we do want it, we all do want it to get better, and I think we're looking for that in order to start building those foundations. And just meeting with Andy and her associate, her name escapes me at the moment.
Tina.
It's multi-year work that has to start from a very slow, thoughtful, expecting not a lot in the beginning, slowly building some momentum to get the community engaged in this broader discussion. I don't think ME Hub could do that alone. I think they need the boards of selectmen and the school committee to kind of be there with them, and the schools to be in partnership, and that's what we talked about. I don't know that the school can stand and do that piece alone.
No.
So maybe engaging the collaboration group in their readiness to start to work together on some of these projects.
I think that the incident in Rockport yesterday was a wake-up call to many folks. I know a colleague said that she knows the family of the child who committed the act and, you know, just, they're just stunned, you know, don't want to give up on kids. So I, I don't know, I just.
I guess one way is, we're talking, it sounds almost like, how do we better respond or adapt or get feedback? And like bucketing, oh yeah, it's like stakeholder analysis, who are all the stakeholders in the district? There's from teachers to voice of the graduate to the students to the, and we're not gonna, so I guess in part, when I look at that, I'm like, okay, which, which of those stakeholders are we talking about wanting input in? Or are we talking about the overall process by how we go for input? That's where, and somewhat with ME Hub and the two different towns, there are stakeholders in this different levels of, of, I guess, the board of selectmen. I don't know, I guess I'm trying to, I always go to, how, okay, how's all this big picture fit together? And I wonder.
And I'm thinking, as you're talking, I'm thinking, how do we get the true temperature on what we collectively may think the community should be and what the community really wants to be? Because are we a little bit, is the community have a kind of a self-reliance bent in it, where it wants to be more individualistic than it wants to be communal? So we want to have these shared core values, but the core value may be independence, and we're missing it.
Yeah.
So where do you have, where do we have that conversation? So we can then go off and try to build things that are consistent with the, with the real ethos of the two communities? Because I think we're trying to do what we know, what we think to be best, based on our collective frame of reference, and we're all on the same page, but are we really consistent with everybody else?
And is it, is it the same experience that the community's having that we're having in the schools?
Right.
So we may be addressing, we may think that we want to address something that is very real and going on in the schools, but some of the community members might say, oh, we don't see that in the community. That's not an issue we're having. We don't need to have that discussion.
But the school is community, you know what I mean? So.
Yes, but therein lies the problem.
And you get, and I guess I just think of like how the sports leagues and the, and the town, or the, and the district sports and the town sports leagues, that's just one example that comes up where, hey, we're all behind sports, but they have very different perspectives and basic approach.
We're very good on things. We're very good on building things. We're building programs, building schools, building schools' structures, school programs, but.
But I want to push back on.
It's hard to have the conversation, we're, you know, we've been working through it with the ruler brooder, of having those conversations even among staff members.
And so you're asking, not so much, not necessarily building, but what are the values and what are the identities that we share?
If you have to have, if you want to be a community that can use a Quaker meeting to problem solve, you have to have a really tightly shared set of values.
Yeah.
That values the mutual respect that you need to have when you go in there.
And I didn't mean to say that we should have a Quaker meeting.
No, no, no.
I just meant Julie would say that these are.
Also understanding of what a Quaker meeting is or some kind of.
But it doesn't happen overnight, and ME, I know you all know this, but I just want to say it out loud, that we had more people at that last meeting than ME Hub has ever.
Ever.
Ever. So it takes, it's just grassroots, it starts small, and we get.
I do think we need to find, there isn't a person yet in the community on that committee yet, and they're not, we have to find them, and they're gonna find us. But the more we build, it's just gonna, the vibe is, the vibe everyone, even I don't worry, I was just gonna donate a lot. It's just, it's gonna keep building. It's not gonna happen overnight.
So back to my original question. Do we throw it out on the table of collaboration, just to start taking a temperature, just to plant the seed?
What, can I, can I just back up for a minute? Are we talking about the culture here in the schools, the building level? Or are we talking about the entire community and the school community?
I think you can't talk about the culture in the school without talking about the broader community. Because I think that whatever is going on in the schools, it's a three-legged stool. You've got parents, you've got community, you've got school. We can only take care of one of those legs. Whatever message we're trying to send from the schools has to be reinforced in the community and.
Right, but the school has to set the tone at the top. They have to have strong leadership. I disagree that it comes from the ground up. I, I would argue that the tone of respect and, and inclusion comes from the top down.
I say that comes from home.
Well, I, I say that the school.
Every single school in the world has.
Has a set of values.
Yeah.
That the school, they have a charter, they have a set of values, and they have, and that is reinforced from the superintendent all the way through the principals, down through the teachers, all the way to the students. And if it's not there and it's not in place, then it doesn't happen.
The kids aren't gonna.
Right.
Ban it on their own.
Which is, we have a culture, we have a cultural issue at our, at the building level, especially in the middle high school. And it is very, very, and, you know, it's pretty acute. So, I mean, Pam, your goal for the past three years has been cultural proficiency of students and staff and expanding opportunities. And every year it's behind schedule. You know, what, what is that? Like what, what is going on there? So, you know, I believe that, yes, it needs to be reinforced at home, but we, the school doesn't have a responsibility to reinforce it at home. They have a responsibility to reinforce it here within the school. And to set the tone for the values of the school. We've been talking about hanging banners of what are the values here at the school? They are respect, they are inclusion, they are whatever, you know, the school deems it to be. And it hasn't happened, as far as I can tell. And kids are not happy. I agree with that. A lot of kids are, are not happy. And, you know, we talk about bringing dogs in and stuff, but we have to address the issue of a somewhat toxic culture. I'm just gonna put it out there on the table, so.
I would disagree with the fact that there's, that, that, that the leadership doesn't have those values and doesn't.
I'm not saying they don't have the values, I'm saying they need to espouse them and model them for the rest of the, the school.
And I, I would argue that they, I think that they do.
Okay.
And I, I don't know if parents really understand some of the stuff that's happening. Like, I don't know if they know the symptoms. And so the school is kind of, you know, this one leg, but there's also this other support from parents and saying, you know, this is, this is how I expect you to behave.
But we can do that, we can't do it with parents, but we can do that for teachers here. And if teachers here, I agree with Rachel in one aspect, the teachers here are not modeling that.
Right.
And there are so many that are, we've got incredible teachers, I'm not saying we don't.
It has to be modeled.
But it has to be modeled, and I agree.
I mean, you read any article, it has to.
It a lot for our children, it is not in the middle high schools.
Yep.
So.
That's on set.
I'm not saying we don't have the teachers.
Nope, and they're not.
It has to be modeled, and it has to be modeled every day, and it has to start from the top down. And, and.
And all point two is two third-party reviews of the middle high school, particularly the high school NEAS report and the special education report, both pointing to the quality culture and level model inclusion school. So we have observations from objective third-party, which are not consistent with some of our personal experiences, and maybe that's what we need to rectify.
And I guess I go back to Rachel, I appreciate you bringing up, I pull up the MER, MER Adjust Mission and Core Values page for the handbook, and maybe the thing to do is start with, because as you say, we signed everything up there, let's take a look at that. And if there is a desire to move forward or change things, or to, I know I see Heart Up, like braggy eight-year-old came home with a heart, so I'm like, oh, okay, that's fixed. I haven't had high school or come home with one of those. But maybe if it is to, how do you espouse it and get it up there and publish it, that may be a, a starting quick word is.
Yep, we have to.
It takes time.
Developmentally appropriate in each law.
I agree, I agree. And my point was.
And the A T L program here, we take, we just start helping, it takes time, and that just came in two years ago.
They're here working at us.
Right? That's what I'm saying, so it takes time. That just started, was it, was it two years ago? Some a great word. This is the third, this is the third year?
Third year.
So it just takes time, and it will build.
Our district is sitting on a national panel for Ruler to talk about their successes of implementation. We're being studied as a model. So I understand that there's personal dissatisfaction, but I think objective third-party data is pointing us in a different direction. And that's not to say there isn't work to do, or mistakes that have been made, or incidents And that's not to say there isn't work to do, or mistakes that have been made, or incidents in which people haven't always acted appropriately. And those would be...
Well, I, yeah, and I think that, I think there needs to be, we can talk about third-party reviews, and we can talk about sitting on panels, I think the bottom line is we have to decide if our kids are happy, and, and across the board, engage, I mean, there's a lot of...
But those are means on interviews with students.
I think you can't make everybody happy all of the time.
Yeah, no, I understand, I'm just saying, yeah. I'm just saying...
They're never, but everybody is going to be happy all of the time.
Right, no, I understand that.
So it was survey data of parents and students, and then focus groups based on them. So I, I mean, the NEAS report is a good measure of what, and it then, we're gonna be visited by an outside set of teachers and parents and administrators from another district. So I think we should use that as our roadmap. Not saying we can't improve or work to make kids happier, but I do think you have to look at the broader cultural context. If what we can control and what we cannot control.
Agreed, so, we could go on all night with this, um, I appreciate everybody's input and feedback. But I think bringing it right around to where we started, was discussing how we address this in a larger format, right? Isn't that where we were?
How do we address what, base what's...
Yeah, how do we address the social, emotional...
We are, is the point, it takes time.
Yeah.
Well, I think part of this is we have, this is...
Or are we looking for community input, that, I guess that's the question.
Well, we were talking about the ME hub piece, and that kind of spun out into the broader.
Yes.
And some of the...
We started talking about the incident with Rockport, and I think that, I don't want the words into anyone's mouth, but the point is, that could happen here more.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah.
Absolutely.
And actually...
Been there, so, I mean, we, we, yeah, I mean, we...
Let's, let's finish off with Ken, and then we'll wrap it for the...
Yeah, so with some of these discussions, forgive me, I'm visual, I'm like, oh, where's my whiteboard, forget a Quaker meeting? I'd love to see like that, we talked school resource officer, we talked ruler, we talked core values, I'd love to see some sort of a, how does it integrate together, be, be my now with that. The other thing that that triggered me when we talk about the Rockport incident is, um, whether it's ruler, S R, ME hub, there have been things we've put in place, and perhaps, yeah, that picture will help us, where do we need to, what's the process for regular review on these? And that was reminding me, do we have a process set up for hearing back from the S R O, for, who is in some ways somewhat of an objective third-party? And also, how are they doing, what do they see in the schools from the safety point of view, and what their charter is?
She'd be happy to come in.
Yeah, and I, and I don't know if that's like, oh yeah, we gotta, let's do that yearly, or let's put her into the principals, or how do we...
Yes.
I, I'd like to hear from her more often than yearly.
And, and the thing that I would also think, that would be also a good case, a good place for engagement of the community mainly. The public safety officers, minimum, hey, come here and hear what your representative, our employee, however, it's, it's a shared resource. Where are we at, what are you seeing in the community as well?
Oh, we're into the schedule a couple of times between now and the end of the year.
And even that...
Can I ask you one positive thing? Are you done?
Time's up, yeah.
Sorry, I thought you were, we had a...
No, I was gonna tell Lester about them, I'm good.
So... We have to give the new team a chance, we have a new athletic director, we've got, so all of those, S R O, so all of those new people in place can be what we need, hopefully, and it will, for our...
I agree, again, Queen Elizabeth.
And it takes time.
It will.
It would be the community, or whatever, so...
I've been on it, I know what it is.
Oh, okay. Well, that's...
So what's next, Shannon?
Yeah.
That's all she wrote, I believe. No, there's a budget hearing, you read it.
I didn't know if there were any, no.
So this, is this about, follow up after our meeting with, um... Yes, let's move on, budget hearing table?
Yes, were any, were there any follow-up, or any follow-up thoughts to the hearing that we should be taking into consideration? Things that you think you may have heard that the whole group didn't?
Yes, you read the paper cause you were sitting over there.
Nothing is coming to mind, other than I thought it was a very productive conversation, and the fact that it was really just the town board members that were here.
Yeah.
And it was a roundtable, it gave us a lot, gave us a lot to think about.
Oh, right, right, right. Sounds like a long time ago.
It does, really, for a long time.
It's long. You, you know... I feel like we're in such a, a hard place, because we've asked voters in Essex to pay for Memorial School and that sub public safety building. The reality is we cannot come to them with a budget increase this year, probably next year either. And, you know, I was hoping for, uh, you know, the Jeff Sulard miracle of the, whatever that was, when he did the adjustment that one year. I just, it, it, you know...
Well, we know we're not getting a year.
I know that, I, I would like some sort of a revenue miracle, love, um, for the town of Essex, and I, I just don't know. I don't think it's coming.
The team's heard that this is a lock-in year, we've got a staff number that we have, we're not going to try to cut anything for the staffing. But nothing's growing, so we know we need to make changes, they need to come internally. And I think we, we have a very rough sketch of what the path is forward, and I don't know that, I wouldn't say I'm panicked about it, or that we should be very nervous, I think that the concern is the projection of where we will be, not where we are today.
Like, we made it back, so you're...
Yeah, we're, I, I think, I think when we are at a point, yes, I think that's exactly right, when you're at a point where you feel comfortable that your expense growth is reasonable, and you feel strongly that you don't want to cut the program, then you are really talking about a revenue problem. And in the category of revenue, if, um, there is a limited capacity for understandable reasons at the tax-based level, then you start to find other sources, and we have some, but they are timed out, and that would be potentially reserve funds. And so, uh, as we did, I think, from a planning standpoint, I, I feel like it was successfully managed in that we, we started to go down that road, maybe it was seven or eight years ago when we had the massive enrollment growth, we said, okay, that's what we're talking about, you know, fine, however, here's what it looks like, and that's what we're doing, and so this is really gonna become a community question of what do they want? Do they want us to continue to do that because we need some time to absorb the school and some local projects that are a priority? Great, but this is, it is a matter of time, and the question is how long, and that's something that we have to work out between the school committee and the community, that's how I see it. That's a long with the recent, what you just had.
We've been very clear. That's why we're qualified.
We've been very clear about delivering that message.
What's that yet?
I said in the, in the most recent past, we've been very clear about delivering that message.
And I think, no one is surprised by it, and they're not, I don't know if receptive is the right word, but I think they're hearing it and they're thinking creatively about, I think, when I put deep brief on there, I was probably thinking about the comments that were made about how we can utilize roll-offs of, um, uh, debt management as a way...
Change, done that.
No, they were looking, they were projecting out to twenty twenty-four, and when some of the high school bonds are gonna start, um, closing out, and instead of returning that money to the community, using that as a way to do some type of an internal override.
Oh, right, right, right.
Right.
So I think, I found that very encouraging, because they're thinking with us and working with us in terms of, okay, this isn't, we're not yelling fire in a crowded building, we're letting you know that we're gonna have a problem, they see it, I think they're confident in how we're managing the budget.
Yeah.
So they're looking for creative ways to help us down the road. So I, I walked away really upbeat from that meeting.
Yeah, I was surprisingly upbeat.
Yeah, but we didn't hear was, there's a problem with the management of spending, I guess is really what I'm getting at.
Right, yeah, I mean...
And so that's good.
Yeah.
And then we didn't hear that there was a disagreement about whether we should cut more, didn't hear that either, so I think that that sounds like we started...
And I think when you think of long-term gains, I mean, that's been our collective effort for years now, is to try to get us more on the same page about, it's more of a structural growth issue than it is a spending problem. So, I think we're in an okay spot for right now.
May I ask one question, I mean, the last time we had revisited, revisited them for budget, we were four hundred K under, and, um...
It feels like one time, but we haven't, nothing's changed since then.
Okay, so, do we have any, is there any, um, update on what you're anticipating using from any reserve account, or we... We're not there, we haven't come to that, okay?
No, no.
We'll probably, we'll see that on next week.
The only, yeah, the only thing that we updated was when we sent the vouchers, is what we do in updates, we all, we came up with the H R A invoice, that we're continuing to see that the idea of bringing down ten percent is looking, uh, possible and not, and possible and responsible. You know, we started with ten percent because we felt that was responsible.
For insurance?
Yeah.
Uh-huh.
It just, it's, it, we will always have the issue of picking a number before we know, and it's not a number you wanna guess wrong on, because it's too hard to make up, as we recall from the last time we had an overage, that was beyond our control. So we just need to be careful, but I think that that, that was incrementally good news.
All right, so the bottom line is we really have no change, other than maybe a little bit more of a positive attitude.
Yeah, I thought it was very constructive.
All right, then we'll look forward to more details next week. In the meantime, any school committee comment? No? A motion to adjourn?
Seconded.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
You're adjourned.